Welcome to the meeting of the Southern Development Control Committee. I think by now it's hardly necessary, but I will draw your attention as I must to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me. And could you make sure, please, your phones are switched to silent or off and that your card is firmly into the console. Before we get round to looking at the applications, can I just remind you who we have here in the officer team? I think by now they're familiar faces, but we have Lewis Jones from the legal team, we've got Steve Weaver who is our interim development control manager, Louise Jandell who is the area team leader for Southern and Western, seamless you see Louise now, seamless, and Kayleigh Taylor who's the planning officer who's going to be dealing with one of the applications tonight. Oh, we do have some members of the public, so welcome. Let's move on then to the main items. Do we have any, oh sorry, the minutes of the meeting, they have been laid on the table, are you quite happy for me to sign them at the end of this meeting? Apologies for absence, Emma.
Number saved.
Put my glasses on, it'd be much better, wouldn't it? Declarations of interest, do we have any before the meeting?
None before the meeting, but Hazlemere Town Councilors declare a non-percenny interest in the applications on the agenda.
councillor Edwards? Right, any questions from members of the public, Emma?
Number saved, chairman.
Steve, have you got any relevant updates to government guidance or something to tell us about?
Thank you, chairman, yes. Well, not government guidance, but Waverley's Local Plan, which of course has been adopted since this committee last sat, and is now, all the policies within it have full weight for the purposes of development management decision making. You'll see in the reports before you this evening, there are still references to saved policies of the old local plan, those are retained policies, and also a reference to what, at the time when we drafted the report, was still a draft local plan 2018. Well, that's now the local plan 2018, and as I said, all those policies do have full weight, and the officers will draw out any relevant, particularly pertinent, policies to you this evening as we go through the reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and this should be more or less the last time that we have to do that, won't it? I think we'll be in the cycle soon, so that we don't have to go back and sort of amend things that were in draft form. How about our performance against government targets, please?
Yes, thank you again. So if I can take members to page five of your agenda papers. So this is a standing item, and again, the last time this was considered, you had the figures relating to the period from the first of April last year to the end of December, you've now got the figures to the end of January this year. In terms of speed of performance, that's been maintained and slightly enhanced by 0.1%. So we're edging even further past the 98% performance on majors, which is clearly excellent performance. And in respect of the non-major performance, again, that's nudged up from last time as well. So all on track, well in excess of government targets, and reflects an awful lot of very hard work of all the team. When it comes to the performance in relation to quality, you'll recall, that's in relation to the way the government measures that is, in terms of appeal overturns. If I start with the non-majors, the figure's gone slightly up, but only marginally, for the best estimate figure from April 17 to 31st of January 18. You'll see the figure in respect of the majors is at about 9%. Now, that may ring alarm bells, but what we don't know at this point in time is what the actual assessment period rolling forward is going to be from the government. All you've got there, that 9%, is what appeal decisions we've had in, how many have been overturned in the period between April and the end of January, against the number of major decisions made between April and January. They're not the same cases, in other words, because some of the appeal decisions coming through are from earlier decisions. So until we get the assessment period coming through for the next wave, it's impossible to say exactly where we stand, but it kind of gives a clue as a direction of travel, and clearly we have had a sequence of approvals by inspectors contrary to officer and committee decisions. With the local plan in place, that should give us a firmer footing going forwards for our decisions where refusals are in prospect. In terms of the last assessment period, so the little box that says 8%, what we've done there is we've built in the two decisions that came through in January which were allowed. However, Waverley has not been designated, the designated authorities have now been publicised, we've not been designated, so it's probably fair to assume that the government has guillotined the results as they stood at the end of December, and at that point it was 6.4%, which is what are reported last time. So we'll keep reporting these figures, but until, on the quality figure, until we get the next assessment period through, I think it's difficult to be absolutely precise, but we'll just, we'll keep monitoring the situation and obviously look closely at any appeal decisions coming back. We've got a crop waiting to come back that are now affected by the new local plan, and we'll need to see what messages come out of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I don't really want to turn this item generally into a great big discussion, because tonight we've got time, we've only got two items, but on the other hand, the weather's poor. So, you know, if you really do have a question on this, you have your agenda, and I suggest you try and get them asked before the meeting rather than during the meeting. But councillor Edwards, you wish to speak?
Thank you, chairman. Just a quick one, what I am concerned about, recently there was a, an appeal against the Waverley ruling with regard to car parking with a new flat put into the roof, and the inspector reported back that there wasn't a problem in parking in Hindhead. Well, this is madness. I don't understand where this inspector came from, and I think we should appeal against that, because he's completely wrong, we have constant problems with parking in Hindhead. The vice chairman will confirm that. I just don't understand his reasoning.
Thank you councillor Edwards. One of the reasons I don't want to turn it into a discussion is it just triggers other thoughts and other people want to speak. So I'll take councillor round, but I would rather then move on to the business of the meeting if I could, and councillor Adams after councillor round, and then, please, can we move on to the business? Otherwise, we'll never get home in the...
Thank you, madam chair, and I'll try to be very brief as well. I just, I assume from reading the English that these percentages are simply based upon the number of appeals and are not qualified in any way to reflect the gravity or size of the appeal, and therefore are a pretty crude measure. Am I right?
Yeah, through you, chairman, yes, it is a pretty crude measure, but it's split down between majors and non-major applications, but the reality is, yeah, it's major applications which are 10 dwellings, 10 dwellings or 1,000 dwellings, they're all majors, but quite, yes, it is a crude measure, but that's the measure that the government's put in place.
Thank you, and councillor Adams?
Well, I think March is going to be the key month. If some of those go against us, I think it would be useful if our end of March meeting had light applications as well, because there'd be a lot to talk about then.
Right, thank you. As I say, I'm not trying to normally stop discussion, it's just that, as I say, the weather is so awful, people have got to get home, and I really think we could discuss this item for hours. So if we could, if you're quite happy, move on to the business of the meeting, I'd rather do that. As I say, I'm not trying to stop you asking questions of the officers, but just if we could do, get into the habit of doing the discussion before the meeting, that would be a great help. So can we move on then, please, to the business of the meeting? Which is application number WA 27, sorry, 2017, 1857, the land to the rear of Harscross 48, Petworth Road, Hazlemere, and Louise is going to take us through the reason that's being brought back into us.
Thank you, chairman. Members will recall that this application for two dwellings was presented to committee last month, where members resolved to refuse the application for... The council have discussed this reason for refusal with the county highway authority, who have concluded that in their expert view, the reason for refusal is not sustainable, and they would not be able to support the council in defending the application at any appeal. They have recommended that if members are concerned with existing speeds, a condition could be recommended as part of an appeal to require a vehicle activated speed limit sign to address the existing speeding issues along the eastbound side of Petworth Road. They consider, it's considered that this condition would be reasonable, and they would support us at an appeal on that basis. Following this discussion, officers are concerned that proceeding with the reason for refusal against the views of our expert consultees on a technical matter which is not one of judgement could result in a ward of costs at appeal against us. As such, officers have brought this back to committee to enable the members to reconsider their resolution in light of the advice received. Following this advice, officers therefore recommend that this particular reason for refusal in relation to highways is withdrawn. Please can I also draw members' attention to the update sheet, which summarises a counsel's opinion that has been received from the applicant, setting out their view that all reasons for refusal are unsustainable. Officers consider that the fourth reason for refusal is justified in the lack of an appropriate legal agreement, and the reasons for refusal in relation to design and neighbour impact are both matters of judgement that are much more likely, sorry, much less likely, sorry, to result in an award of costs against the council. As such, they do not, officers do not recommend any of the other reasons for refusal are withdrawn. The update also makes some changes in relation to the three reasons for refusal that the council has recommended, removing reference to the draft local plan following its adoption, and removing reference to policies that have been deleted. In conclusion, the officer of recommendation is now that permission be refused for the three reasons that members agreed at the last committee, and the fourth reason in relation to the highways issue be removed in light of the advice from the highway authority and the opinion from officers that this could result in an award of costs against the council. Thank you, members.
Thank you, members. This is an unusual one to come back to us, it's quite timely with the change from the draft policies to the local plan, so in some ways it fits in well with the timetable. So, over to you. Going to move straight to the recommendation? Gosh. Oh, councillor Ishwood?
Understand fully the sightlines and everything else on the amended access, just moves the exit onto the road a little closer to the brow of the hill, which Surrey Highway is considered to be adequate and safe. What I do want to point out, though, is that the enforcement action taken some time ago, 2013, has not been complied with fully. The hardcore, the rubbish and everything else is still there, and if you were to look at it, as I did earlier today, from the point of view of Littlefield, the, they would be looking out of their kitchen, basically, up at the bottom of the cars and everything else driving past there. I find it totally unsatisfactory that enforcement action has not been completed five years after we took action on this matter. So I feel quite strongly about that, but I take the officer's point that the, we can't appeal on highways grounds, we won't get support, and therefore it's unsound, but I do recommend that enforcement action is taken on the 2013 application. Sorry.
Yes, can I just get, are you going to write names now, boy?
Yes, I will.
Concentrate. Can the officers confirm that one of them will take this up with enforcement, so that we know that this is going to be followed up, please?
Yeah, we have raised this with enforcement following last month's meeting, and we will follow it up again following this meeting.
Sorry, councillor Nels?
Can we not add a condition that no work is to start, should the appeal be successful? No work is to start until there is full compliance with the enforcement notice.
Officers?
In my view, unfortunately, that wouldn't be a reasonable condition. They are two separate things, and if the appeal is allowed, then it would be unlikely that an inspector would support a condition of that nature. Thank you, chairman.
I'm sure you're not satisfied, councillor Ishwood, but I don't think there's much we can do there. Councillor Nels?
Thank you, chairman, on that same point, because there has been a reply this week which we have been copied into, which, from enforcement, saying, oh, we'll see how it goes Wednesday night, because if you make a planning application, you can ignore any enforcement, and quite clearly that's what's been happening. And I think that should be quite clearly in the report to the inspector, so they're aware of that. I would also like to make sure that the professional transport report is also sent to the inspector, because that disagrees with the Surrey highways. We have a professional report, and we have Surrey's, and I think that they both need to go forward. And let's not forget that Surrey highways said they didn't care about people breaking the speed limit, that wasn't their problem, and make sure that that goes forward as well, because I think that was reckless.
Thank you councillor Nels. Louise, do you want to comment on that?
Just to advise that all representations are sent to the inspectorate for every appeal we receive, so the inspectorate would have that report that was received from the neighbouring residents. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards, did you indicate?
Yes, thank you, chairman. I was concerned about the enforcement action, I went to see planning yesterday, planning enforcement yesterday, to go through this particular problem, and I believe that they believe that, you know, that they've complied with the enforcement order. I couldn't see it, but that's what they told me, so that's all I can say, you know, because I was concerned and that, you know, anyway, I just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we'll rely on the officers to liaise a bit on that one, if you would, Louise, just to make sure that if there is a breach, that it is dealt with, and that everyone is aware fully of the situation. I think that's as much as we can do at the moment. Does anybody else wish to speak on this matter? In that case, shall we move to the recommendation, which is, revised recommendation on your update sheet is the clearest. There's a lot of papers in your report, but on page two, bottom of page two of the update sheet, you have the revised recommendation, which is that permission be refused, and it's the three reasons, having removed the one that basically Surrey wouldn't support were it to go to appeal. Is everyone quite contented with that? Everyone understands what we're doing here? In that case, can I see all those in favour of refusing permission?
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much, members. Thought that might be slightly more complicated than it was, I'm delighted. So shall we move on then, please, to our next application? Application item B1, WA 2017 2324, the coach house Eglington Road in Rushmore. And this is a change of use from agricultural to residential, use class C3 of an existing track and alterations to the surfacing. And it's Kayleigh Taylor, I think, who's going to take us through this, please.
Thank you, chairman. This application has been brought before the area committee at a request of a local The application site, outlined in red, is located to the east of Eglington Road, shown here. The site comprises a detached dwelling which is accessed via a shared driveway with the first cottage shown here. So the shared driveway comes along here, across here, and there's the first cottage, and here's the dwelling of the application site. This application seeks permission for the change of use of an equestrian track, reinforcement and extension to provide access to the coach house. The diagram below shows how the track would be reinforced. There would be plastic units installed below the surface of the track, which would then be planted with grass. These photographs show the existing site. Photograph A shows the track running adjacent to the gardener's farm to the right, so just here. Photo B is looking back at the gate as it adjoins the existing shared access, which you can see just down here. Photograph C shows further up the track towards the bend, just around here, and photograph D shows a view towards the house. These matters, sorry, the matters of principal and technical judgment are: the impact on trees, the council's tree officer has considered the proposal, the trees affected are well set back from public vantage points, and as such, the proposal would not result in harm to trees of public amenity value. Impact on highways, the county highway authority has raised no objection to the application. The proposed access would adjoin the existing shared access and would not directly adjoin the adopted highway. And the effect on the SPAs, the proposal is not likely to increase the number of people permanently residing at the site, as such no objection is raised on the effect of the SPAs. The matters of planning judgment, which councillors are asked to consider this evening, are: the impact on the greenbelt, officers consider that the proposal constitutes an engineering operation that will preserve the openness of the greenbelt and would not conflict with the purposes of including the land within the greenbelt. It is therefore considered that the operation development and associated change of use is appropriate greenbelt development. The impact on visual amenity and landscape character, officers consider that the proposed access would have a grass finish and as such would be in keeping with the verdant character of the area. Furthermore, it will be seen within the context of existing residential development. And impact on residential amenity, officers are satisfied that there are acceptable separation distances to neighbouring properties. Please can I turn members' attention to the update sheet. Since the preparation of the agenda, the council has adopted the Waverley Borough Local Plan Part 1. As such, full weight can be given to the policies contained within this plan. Certain policies of the 2002 local plan have not been retained and therefore no longer given weight in the assessment of this application. This does not alter the overall conclusions of the report or the officer recommendation. The recommendation is that permission be granted as set out on pages 67 to 68 of the agenda. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Kayleigh, very concise. I presume councillor Adams is going to just kick us off with this one?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, the picture painted by the officers in this case is rather incomplete. To start with, the relevant planning history on page 1659 omits the very relevant fact that planning permission was given for the demolition of stables and the substitution of those stables by the coach house. Prior to that, the only access to this site was down the north side, which is not shown in any great detail on that picture, but it actually runs, and that is the one that is in use today, the, yeah, track B. Now, the, there was no track down the proposed, where it says proposed reinforced track. There was no track originally, I mean, I'm not saying that horses weren't, didn't use the woodland, which is, that's all woodland there, but there was no track prior to the demolition of the stables. Though in fact, the demolition of the track that is now asked for request was in fact refused on that application. Now, the, so the demolition of the stables provided the base material for the construction of this track, which then took place. Enforcement was called in, and the, as it says here, there is open enforcement due to alleged breach. That was all trees right up to the boundary before this track was created, which was only a few years ago. So the issue here is, the reason that it's come for planning permission is because currently there is an agreement between enforcement and the landowner that they will not use this track until this is decided tonight. So if we refuse it, then enforcement will act. If we approve it, then obviously that overrides any enforcement. But this track is totally unnecessary, because Route B has a very adequate access to both. So the removal of trees all the way along that area and the construction of this wide track was made against a previous refusal. And my suggestion...
Thank you. Would the officers like to comment at this point, or shall I take another speaker? I think, you know, we do need clarity on some of what councillor Adams has said, reassurance. Would you like some time, or shall I? Yeah, shall we move on to councillor Ishwood?
Well, yes, this really follows on from what you've just asked for, chairman. I think we need to know what were the reasons for refusal when the original stables were demolished and the application was put in for this track then. The reasons for refusal then are surely highly material now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you put it so much better than I did, but that's exactly the point, you know, we need clarification, otherwise we can't possibly make an informed decision. Councillor Hess?
Please put my mind to rest if you can, but I'm really disturbed that we've been asked to make a judgment on something which has been considered before and refused, and is currently subject to enforcement action, which hasn't been carried out, I gather, and we haven't been made aware of any of this. Couldn't we have some sort of, yes, explanation of why the papers seem to be so dramatically inadequate? Please.
Yes, thank you. I mean, the reason I took two councillors was so that the officers can try to give us some answers to those questions, because I think we're all in the same position. Are you in a position to? Right, I'll take Louise, shall I, and then you, councillor?
Yeah, so I've had a look through the planning history. Planning permission was granted in 2015 for a replacement dwelling, and that was granted. There's nothing on the history that says that permission has been refused. In relation to the trees, they weren't protected, so they could come down without any permissions from us. And in relation to the enforcement history, the, this application has come about following investigation by the enforcement team. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just clarify this, because I think we're all in the same position here. Councillor Adams clearly said that when the permission for the coach house was given, the access was along Route B at the top, and there was no access granted along the proposed route now. So the occupiers have come along and put in a route, which was not acceptable, and therefore we took enforcement, and they've come in now to regularise a situation that we have taken enforcement against, if you'll pardon my English. Am I interpreting that correctly?
We haven't taken enforcement action against them. There was a complaint from a neighbour, and the enforcement team went out to investigate and found that the track was unauthorised, and invited them to submit an application to regularise the situation. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards, you look, has confused us, the rest of us.
Thank you, chairman. This is inappropriate development in the greenbelt, and it's unacceptable. I don't understand why it's come back to us, you know, with the proposal, with the recommendation that the officers have put, you know, I don't understand it. Can't, sorry, I don't agree with it. Thank you.
I think we are allowed not to understand. I think it is a human characteristic, we are allowed. Councillor Adams, she wished to come back, unless anybody else wishes to speak before? Councillor Adams?
Well, I'll just remind everybody that this was actually in the greenbelt, there were a lot of trees along that thing, and they took down many more than were authorised by the 5.5 cubic metres per quarter. So there was a steady... So there was a steady removal of trees all the way along that track. This is in a core part of the green belt, there are lots, it's only within 400 metres of the Wildon Heath Spa, so it's, you know, an area where we do value the green belt specifically for the fauna in the spa.
Thank you, chairman. I'll start by just asking for clarity on this. Councillor Adams said there was a previous planning application to do with the erection of the coach house and demolition of the stables? And as part of that, the issue of where to place access was considered?
Yes, that is my understanding, and that was, the access bit was refused.
And it was this access that was... Please, I don't want a two-way conversation. You'll get your answer, maybe from councillor Adams afterwards, maybe from the officer, but please, not from each other.
My second point, I would like an answer to that one in due course, my second point is that the comment in here that the trees are not visible from the public realm strikes me as inconsistent with what the inspector said in the Barbins Grange appeal, which, if you recall there, this was an even more elaborate case. It was building a tennis court and pavilion, large pavilion, in an agricultural field. And this committee was asked twice to approve it and to discontinue enforcement proceedings, which we refused to do, and it went to a public inquiry and the applicant lost. The point the inspector made, which resonated with me, was that no one can tell who will own what land in future, and therefore you're meant to be preserving the appearance of the area and openness, I suppose, at all times. So it's not very satisfactory to me, certainly, that if, and I'm hoping for a clear answer to this, the issue of this track was discussed on a previous occasion and was refused, that that fact was not made clear in the papers. To me, relevant planning history must include that particular fact. So if that's what happened, then I would like to gently complain that in future, anything as relevant as that should be made clear in the papers so we can take it into account. My own feeling is that if there's been a previous refusal of a track in that position, then I would like, as others have said, to know what the reasons were then. And it may be the best thing to do is to defer this application until the papers can be amended and we can look at this with all the facts at our disposal. I don't know whether that would be helpful and whether other members agree, but I do feel that I'm operating at something of a disadvantage on this matter.
Thank you, councillor Mulliner. Can we get a definitive answer on what track was agreed at the time that the coach house permission was given? So if we can get a definitive answer on whether or not their permission was given using Route B and therefore not creating a new access, then I think we know where we stand.
I mean, unfortunately, I haven't got the paperwork for the previous applications, but I can see from the planning history on the site that there has only ever been one refusal on this site, and that was in relation to a detached triple garage and store following the demolition of an existing garage and store. So I can't see anything from the history that relates to a refusal in a relation to an access in this location.
But surely, if it's, when they gave permission for the coach house access, as councillor Mulliner said, must have been discussed and agreed, because you can't just give permission...
Yes, so it's the northern track, the axis which is, which basically runs round from, oh, sorry, from A to B, round the corner. That was the axis that was agreed at the time of that application.
So am I being terribly simple here? So that was agreed, the coach house was agreed, that was the track. So this track is totally unnecessary, was created on a whim, and somebody complained, brought out enforcement, and they're coming in now to regularise the position. But technically, there has never been any permission for a change of use for this piece of land to be a track?
The change of use would be for residential, because that effectively is what the track is being used. But that is correct, that is what this application is for. This application is for the access track and the associated change of use to residential land. So that's what members have been asked to decide this evening, whether they consider that this access track and the associated change of use is acceptable.
Councillor Mulliner has put forward a suggestion for deferral. Personally, I feel we can determine it this evening, but I, certainly if anybody wants to second councillor Mulliner's suggestion for deferral, we could debate that. In which case, councillor Inchboard?
Well, my understanding is that there was no track there until the coach, until the stables were converted. And I would also just ask the question, if there was a refusal of another application regarding a garage, which you mentioned just now, Louise, why isn't that listed in the And if this track was not there until the conversion took place and several, and a lot of trees were taken down, then that really undermines the whole thing. I am deeply unhappy about it.
Councillor Isherwood?
Just a query, actually, chairman. Councillor Adams mentioned a planning application in 2015. I'd just like a little more detail on that, please. Did I make a mistake?
No, it's not listed.
Can you just turn your microphone off? Thanks, councillor Adams. Right, Louise, you've got a full planning history there, have you?
I have, yes.
Do you think you could enlighten, I mean, we need to know what is relevant to this. I mean, to me, it seems that this was created unnecessarily without permission and therefore should not be supported. I want to know what in the planning history would change my mind on that.
Firstly, just to say, just because something has happened without planning permission, that isn't the relevant test. The relevant test is to assess what has happened against current planning policy and come to a judgement as to whether you find that acceptable in relation to those policies. There is history in 2015 for replacement dwelling following demolition of an existing dwelling and associated stables.
So, members, do you feel ready to move to the recommendation? Nobody seemed to want to speak to a deferral, so shall we move straight to the recommendation, which I presume is on the update sheet, but I don't think it's changed, has it, from the, yeah, thank you very much. And the recommendation is that permission is granted subject to the conditions one or two, which are in your agenda papers. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission, please?
None.
In which case, could I have an opposing recommendation, please, with a second?
No, I think it's for how many were against.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was unanimous.
I think, well, yeah.
Right, sorry. Anybody against granting permission?
Yeah, sorry.
I thought it was unanimous. I thought it was. We're not going to do abstentions as well, are we?
No, they're not going to do abstentions.
No, it was a sea of hands, I saw that. So could I have an alternative recommendation, please? Councillor Mulliner?
It looks to me as though impact on trees is the relevant...
Sorry, can you just give me the alternative recommendation?
That the permission be refused.
Thank you. And do you have a second? Thank you, councillor Inchboard. Right, councillor Mulliner, would you like to explain why?
Yes, I think the, reading the papers, the impact on trees appears to be the most relevant. It appears to have been quite a bit already, but there's no excuse to allow even more. And that would seem to me inadequate reason, but perhaps officers can comment, as they usually do.
Yes, it's harm to the green belt, isn't it, that we're objecting to? Councillor Inchboard?
It is development in the green belt which is automatically deemed to be harmful, and there is absolutely no need for it.
Councillor Edwards?
Can we ask for enforcement action against the existing track, please, because it's illegal? Thank you.
I think I know the answer to that, but Louise, are you going to answer that, or be very quiet all evening?
Well, I'm sure officers can have a discussion with the enforcement team in the same, in the same way that we will on the previous item, but in terms of adding a condition or anything like that to, well, it wouldn't be a condition because we're recommending refusal, but it wouldn't be appropriate to deal with tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, but we will chase up the enforcement, the officers will do that, I'm sure. Have we got any, Louise, you're going to put that into proper speaker, are you?
Yeah, I would recommend on the basis of the discussions that you've had this evening, the proposal would harm the open character of the green belt due to the loss of trees. Furthermore, the proposal would constitute inappropriate green belt for which there were no very special circumstances that would outweigh this harm. The proposal would therefore conflict with policy RE2 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan Part One 2018 and paragraphs 87 to 90 of the MPPF 2012.
Right, members, so we have an alternative recommendation this time, that permission be refused. Can I see all those, please, in favour of refusing permission?
That's unanimous.
In that case, I think that completes the business. Yes, certainly.
Thank you, chairman, for your indulgence. Members, obviously that last item, you felt in an awkward position, obviously we've been trying to find answers for you on the basis of what we've got. If, when you read your order papers, you see something which doesn't chime with your understanding of the situation, can I make a plea that you raise out with officers, if at all possible, before the committee meeting, because we're in a much better position to look at planning histories, unearth the sequence of events that have led to situations arising, rather than trying to do it here at the table with, you know, with resources, but not with the full resources of the planning department at our disposal. So I can simply put that over to you. We're perfectly happy to take questions that you have about what you read, but if it is matters of fact, as I think that was the question tonight, if we can have that in advance of the meeting, if at all possible, it will help us help you. Thank you. Thank you, chairman.
Thanks, Steve. I mean, that's a good point, and it applies to so much of it. If we really don't understand something, we should immediately get clarification. Councillor Adams?
May I just comment that I have discussed this case with Louise some weeks ago?
I'm sure there was nothing personal in the comment. As a general rule, councillor Adams, it makes much more sense if we see something in our papers or see something missing, that we go to the officers before the meeting, because as Steve says, they've then got all the information that they can give us. So thank you very much, really a good piece of advice to finish on. So safe journey home, everybody.